Good evening, I'm calling the January 9th, 2017 Eden Prairie Planning Commission to order. Whoever on please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please sit down. All right, so welcome to tonight's meeting. First item on the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. Do you have any amendment requests? Hearing none, do I hear a motion? Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda for tonight is approved. Next up is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting which was held December 12th, Aside from a few typos that were submitted, anything of substance? I did wa-- I was unable to attend the last meeting, I did watch the meeting online and as far as I understand, there's no reason to abstain, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, okay. All right. No amendments? Do I hear a motion? Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Planning Commission minutes dated December 12th, 2016. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are passed. All right, we're going to move on to public meetings for tonight, there are no informational meetings. The first one is AERS Estates, Lake Access and Dock, a request for appeal of staff determination that the legal non-conforming status of a second dock located at 12530 Beach Circle has ceased. Will the City Planner please give us a report?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, at your December 12th meeting, a public meeting was held regarding the request that the Chair just outlined. So as a result of that discussion that evening, the staff was directed to prepare findings upholding staff's determination. Staff has worked with the City Attorney to prepare those findings, you will find them in your packet, along with, there are some Goldenrod items on the table for you this evening, those are the exhibits to support the findings that are in the packet. The exhibits are copies of information that were included in the, for the most part, were included in the original packet on December 12th, so it's just compiling all of them in order to be attached to the final order should it be approved this evening. Also in your packet this evening is a memo from the City Attorney in which he discusses the fact that members that weren't in attendance are, can still vote on the findings this evening, and urging members to not only read through the minutes in the packet but also watch the video if possible online. In, the last item in your packet that I'd like to highlight is a response from the appellant's attorney, Peter Beck. He provided some response to the discussion on December 12th, so that is in your packet as well. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do we have any questions from the Commission? After watching the video and seeing the response, I think it would be fair to, and it was a close vote, I think it'd be fair if the appellant would like to say a few words that I would open, be open to that without rehashing the entire meeting if there's anything new you'd like to add. If you could just state your name for the record please and spell it.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, my name is Peter Beck and I'm here tonight on behalf of the appellant, ERS Estates, and the owner of that entity, Dr. Elmer Salavich. Appreciate the opportunity to be heard tonight and I will just focus on a couple points in the letter that we wrote, I know that you, that we did manage, thanks to Julie's help, to get it into the city in time, to get in the packet, so I'm sure you've had a chance to read it and I won't go through it in detail. I wanted to spend a little more time on the proposed resolution which we did not get a chance to see before preparing that letter, and I had just a couple comments on that. I guess, as the Commissioners know, you know, we think what's happening here is basically a grave injustice to Dr. Salavich and his property rights, and an unnecessary one. We, you know, we went into some detail about the history, there was some feeling at the last Planning Commission meeting that Dr. Salavich perhaps hadn't done his due diligence, and we tried to lay that out in the letter, again, I'll try to avoid going through it sentence by sentence, but the bottom line is, he bought the property, he came to the city and asked about the dock, and he was told that the dock was okay, that when he was ready to put it back in, it would be subject to the same rules as any other dock in the state, and he should come when he was ready, when he was finished with the renovation of the house and ready to put the dock in. So he went ahead and began the renovation of the house, in the findings, was news to me, I think there were some 18 building permits issued for that property, and nowhere over the course of that period of time did anyone from the city ever advise him that a significant portion of value of that property was gone because the dock hadn't been rolled back out in the lake. And also, again, as the Commission heard, last time when he came to subdivide, split the lot into two, there was another opportunity for staff to tell him that the ordinance had been amended a few months before, and that at the same time they recognized those dock rights, in that staff report, there's no mention again that the ordinance had changed, and that those dock rights which were specifically recognized in that staff report would disappear if the city later determined that he had not used the property, or had not used the dock for a one-year period. So we, so on that issue with the due diligence, you know, the bottom line is, well, what more could he have done? Yes, he could have read, I suppose, all of the city's legal notices and seen that that non-conforming use ordinance had been amended a couple months before he bought the property. That's the only other thing he could have done. He asked about it, when he bought the property, it came up again, less than a year later when he came to subdivide the property, nobody mentioned it, in fact, nobody mentioned it at all until we asked about it last fall, 10 years later. So, on that issue, I guess we feel he did do his due diligence, and that should not be held against him that he didn't read the legal notice in the paper. A bigger issue came up at the Planning Commission last time, and that is, did he ever in fact discontinue his use of the dock? As we have told the Commission several times, he acquired the property, he did not move into it, he has, to this day, it hasn't been lived in since he bought it, and he began renovating it, and as the staff report or the resolution indicates, there were dozens of building permits, or a dozen or more building permits issued for it. He did not remove that dock, we found out at the last hearing, the neighbor who also testified that he would like to get rid of the easement, the neighbor took the dock. So if he is to lose the right to put that, or for his buyer, potential buyer, to put the dock back in because the neighbor who never wanted the dock or the easement there removed it, again, I just think that's, the city really shouldn't be part of an injustice like that. But as a legal issue, he did not discontinue the use of the dock. We also did a little more follow-up with the prior owners, actually the children of the prior owners about the dock, and learned that it was a typical aluminum and fiberglass dock on wheels that got rolled in and out. So it was rolled into the lake when the parents were still there, and rolled out apparently for the last time when they sold the house, but to our knowledge, it remained, rolled out of the lake in its normal manner where it would be until Mr. Paradise removed it. So, you know, we also touched on the issue in the letter, our feelings about whether the city can do this or not, whether they would have to compensate Dr. Salavich for that, that's probably beyond the scope of the Planning Commission's consideration, but we don't want the issue to get lost. So I'll move on to the, to the resolution, I just had a couple points on that. Finding of Fact 8, for those of you that have that in front of you, I think it's maybe the second page, says that the dock has not been located on the shore of Lot 8, Block 1, beginning in 2006. I don't think we know that. We don't know, but Mr. Paradise, as I recall, testified something like 10 years ago that he took that dock away, but we don't know that. In fact, Ms., Dr. Salavich believes it was there later than that. Again, not as important a fact as some of these others, but just to point out that we don't necessarily agree with that. More importantly, if you went to, if you are able to go to Finding 27, talks about Mr. Paradise's testimony, and says that he stated that the dock was pushed out of the lake and up onto his property by ice. My notes didn't mention that, that it was pushed out of the lake by ice, perhaps he said that, I did not go review the, review the tape, and if the City Attorney did, and that's what he said, I just didn't write it down in my notes. But as I said, we don't believe it would be true, because the dock was a rolling dock, and it would have been rolled up on shore. More importantly, that paragraph, the way it's written, it talks about Mr. Paradise going and removing the dock from his property, that is probably true, but only because the easement goes over his property, okay? So it is his property, but Dr. Salavich owns an easement over it for the purpose of the dock. So it wasn't as though this dock was where it shouldn't have been, it was on the easement, it had been rolled up, and again, Mr. Paradise, who never wanted it there in the first place, took it away. So, those are our only two points we wanted to make with respect to the proposed findings. Down in the conclusions, Conclusion B at the bottom of that page that Finding 27 is on, says that the petitioner admits that he ceased use of the dock on Lot 8. Again, I want to be clear that we, Dr. Salavich did not discontinue his use of the dock. He left it up on shore while he was remodeling the house and nobody was living there, but the dock was there until Mr. Paradise took it away. So, again, our request is that the Planning Commission recognize that this use was not discontinued, and allow Dr. Salavich the right to put it back, at this point he'll have to buy a new one, and presumably roll it, put it on the easement, roll it back into the lake next summer if he is able to sell the house, and as, as the Commission heard last time, the sale of the house is entirely dependent on having this dock right. Without the dock, you know, his, Dr. Salavich's $2 million investment is not worth very much, in fact, at this point, it's worth nothing, can't find a buyer at all. So, those were the comments we had from the letter, from the findings. Dr. Salavich is here this evening, and if you would like to hear from him again about, you know, the follow-up conversations he had with the daughter of the original owners or anything else, he's happy to answer any questions or present a little more testimony. And of course, I'm happy to answer questions too.
Okay, great, thank you. Does anyone have initial questions here? Great, thank you for your input.
Thank you.
I used a few issues, does the city wish to respond to?
I would care to respond, and I have put together a response if you had allowed Mr. Beck to speak, I have a few points that I'd like to make with reference to his letter.
That'd be great, thank you.
Julie, are you going to turn it on for me?
Ready, there we go.
So, you know, Mr. Beck sent his letter to the city, and I informed staff it was perfectly fine, please, put it in the packet for you, I didn't need to see it first. So I read it after it was in the packet, and thought that I needed, one, to clarify a few things about what the decision is about, and what your role is about, and then some of the facts. So the first thing is, what does state law say? There's been a lot of talk about intent to abandon, and if you read the state law, and we have it up on the screen, this is the applicable section, and it says nothing about intent or abandonment. It says that a non-conforming use, and I'll paraphrase, can continue by repair, replacement, restoration, maintenance, improvement, a whole bunch of things, but not including expansion unless the non-conformity or occupancy is discontinued for a period of one year. So, that's what state law says about it. Second slide is the City Code. So in 2005, as reflected in the findings, the City Code was changed to come in conformity with state law. It had not been in conformity since about 2001 when the state amended and actually put in that provision. Prior to that, there was no provision in state law governing variances saying when they continued or couldn't continue, and this was a reaction of the legislature to protect property owners, saying that a non-conforming use can continue, you can take it down to the bare ground, to the foundation, and build it back up, and if you stay within those four corners and don't increase the size, you can have a brand-new structure and it can be there for another 50 or 75 years. They were trying to protect property rights, but not if you discontinued the use or occupancy of the non-conforming use. So then the next slide, Julie?
That's it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so this is the statement before the code was changed in 2005, and you'll see, this is where the discussion of abandonment comes from. In 2005, before Mr. Salavich purchased the, Dr. Salavich, pardon me, purchased the property. Next, please. So in Mr. Beck's first letter to the city, he cites the case of Isani versus Peterson as supporting his view on abandonment, and that because there had been no intent to abandon the use, therefore it was not, it was still valid. As I've said, there's no current reference to that abandonment concept in state law or the city ordinance, and further, that very court refused to interpret the statute at the time to require an intent to abandon. It said it would not read into the provisions of the county, the county ordinance, the burden of having to prove abandonment, and so it doesn't, does not stand for the proposition set forth in his letter, in my opinion. So with respect to his recent letter, I'd say, you know, this isn't about deeded property issues or rights, or, nor is it about due diligence or lack thereof. The staff's determination that it was non-conforming is because the use was discontinued for more than a year. The only issue for the Planning Commission is whether this determination was correct. You should apply the facts as you find them to the law. With respect to the issues surrounding that, let me divert from the slides for a second and address the verbal comments, that the dock was pulled out by the property owner of the lot. I did listen to the recording, and that is what was there. It isn't a matter of whether he removed the dock from the lake, it's a matter of whether there was a discontinuance of the occupancy of a dock. Now, but for side yard setbacks, he could put 20 docks within that easement, just line them up. That would not be a use of a dock as contemplated by the code. The fact that it was pulled up on shore, if a dock owner pulled it up on shore intentionally and left it there, and it was a non-conforming legal use and never put it back in, it was his own act, it still would expire. The use of a dock is putting it in the lake for use as a dock in the lake, and if we were inarticulate in Paragraph 8, that petitioner had not located a dock on the shore, I think I could have more properly said, "on the shore into the lake." It's really, and we could, if you adopt these, I'd suggest that we amend that so that there's no dispute that we're not talking about placement on the shore, I'm not hanging any hats or any reasoning upon placement on the, on the shore. Further, I do not recall that there was any testimony about rolling the dock out and not rolling it back in, it was rather, Mr. Pardisi, the property owner, said that it had come into a state of disrepair, had been squeezed and broken up by the ice, and was now on the shore, where on the shore, no one testified to, and that he removed it from his property. Had he not removed it from his property, had it stayed there as a disheveled, broken-up dock, I would be taking the same position. So I think actually the points on the last slide here are what I've just covered is... So then we get to this duty to inform, and to have a duty, you have to find a place, where does this duty arise from? You have a duty to do certain things, and so you have a duty because you have a contract? You have a duty because you have an obligation under law where it's specified that you have a duty? Or you have a duty under the, what is referred to as the common law? For instance, not to have dangerous, unseeable traps on your property that can injure people, okay? So even a trespasser sometimes is protected if you have a hidden trap on your property. So a duty has to arise from some concept in the law, and there is no duty imposed by law on the city to notify people when their property becomes a non-conforming legal use. In, in the simplest answer to the question that Mr. Beck posed is, what more could his client do, is he could have read that provision of the City Code, not searched through all sorts of notices that would not have told him whether the item had been passed or not, but simply searched through the City Code to find that specific provision, and I'm quite sure had he consulted with Mr. Beck at that time, Mr. Beck would have told him about, about the provision, so. And again, it's, it's important to remember in this respect what the application was in 2006. It was not an application to renovate his home, it was an application to plat the property. Staff would have had, at that point, no reason to talk about renovation of a property that they would not necessarily have any reason to assume was going to be vacant, or that that would push the discontinuance of use of the dock. They would have had no reason then to go further and say, "Oh, by the way, you need to make sure you continue to use your dock every year, at least for part of the year, maybe even for a month of the year, who knows what the time period is." But, but a real legitimate good faith use of the dock every year, and we know in Minnesota you don't use the dock 12 months of the year, you get, you're lucky if you get six months, right, of good dock use. So to have it pulled out of the lake is quite normal, if you don't put it back in that next year, and it stays out for that whole season, you have discontinued your use if it's a non-conforming use. That's all I have, if you have any questions, be happy to answer them, otherwise the matter is in the Commission's hands, either adopt the order that includes the findings, I'd recommend the slight change to Number 8 to clarify that issue, or to vote not to adopt the findings, and then we'll, we'd have some discussion about what you wanted to do if that's in fact what you did.
Just one follow-up on the commentary regarding Conclusion B, that the petitioner admits that he ceased use of the dock? Would you suggest any edits to that point?
Pardon me?
Would you suggest any edits to Conclusion B, that the petitioner admits that he ceased use of the dock?
No, because he said that on the record at the meeting, and I think Mr. Beck is trying to reflect that his, he never discontinued his use of the easement, is what his language says, and this isn't about the easement, the 20-foot easement that runs along the side of that lot, this isn't, you discontinued your use of the easement. We don't have a non-conforming application to the easement, the easement is not non-conforming. To the, could be, to the extent it allows the storage of a dock within the setback, but the setback is probably not 20 feet, so if the dock is in the inside 10 feet of that 20 feet, that'd be fine. It's not about the easement, it's about the use and occupancy of the dock in the lake.
And so just to clarify, you said that if someone had a pristine dock that they just rolled up on the easement and just left it there, that's still discontinuing because it's not putting it into the lake, even if it was sitting there pristine for...
That's correct, that would, that is my opinion.
Comments or questions from the Commission?
Mr. Chairman, in the appellant's letter to us from just the other day, in his closing paragraph, he states, and I quote, "What the city is attempting to do is Dr. Salavich, to Dr. Salavich represents government at its worst." Mr. Rosso, can you describe governmental procedures and policies that are similar to ours, like in surrounding suburbs? If this was to happen in the city of Minnetoka, Plymouth, Bloomington, elsewhere in the Twin Cities area, does government function differently in its policies and procedures to notice, notices to the public, notices to homeowners, or in any way, shape or form, how are we different in our approach to these issues through governmental policy?
First, the, all governments, city governments in Minnesota are bound by the statute I first showed you about the discontinuance. So that's provided for by statute. It's also provided for by statute that all cities, when amending the text of their city zoning ordinance, need to publish a notice that they are doing so, publish it in the official newspaper, every year in January, the city appoints an official newspaper, that's where all the notices get published. So all cities follow that, or should, unless they're violating the law, follow that same procedure. Does any city in the state have more process with respect to notice than is required by state law? The answer to that is yes. Eden Prairie has more process in a number of areas than is provided for by state law. For instance, Eden Prairie holds a hearing when it wants to increase fees related to a variety of uses, and it's not required to hold a hearing except on fees that are land use related. So everything you deal with is land use related, that has to be adopted by an ordinance after a hearing. Eden Prairie determined, oh, I think when Councilmember Nelson first came, left this body and became a member of the City Council, she wanted to provide notice of a hearing on all the other fees. They increased the fees in Matt's department with respect to ice time or use of fields, she wanted a public hearing about that, and the council went along, and they've continued to do that for years. So you would only know that by either one, it might be, but not necessarily referred to in a city's ordinances, in the case I give you about Eden Prairie, it's in no ordinance, it was a motion made at a City Council meeting that we just remember to do every year, and it's institutional memory and the fact that it gets passed on from one city manager to another, so.
Thank you. Any other comments, your questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go over what I objected to at the last meeting about this. It still goes down very, very tight with me. It's one of notice. I'm not questioning whether the city, you know, didn't meet state law, absolutely, I get it. But the common sense involved, the way I'm looking at it, when a man, anyone, as far as a property owner, is looking at a $400,000 potential loss, and I still say that there has been many, many opportunities... has been many, many opportunities for the term delivery, as far as letting the homeowner know that this is about to expire, I have a real problem with that. I had a problem with it before, and I really have a problem with that. I think we're better than that. I think our delivery system can improve, and I think it should have improved going forward. I just look at all the opportunities, all the permits, and granted, when the inspectors went out, they were inspecting for other things, but how much further did they have to go to include a notice? Probably not all that far. How much did it cost to maybe drop something in the mail? Somewhere with this, in this 10-year period, to let the homeowner know? Not very much. And with that, to penalize a homeowner to this degree, I have a real problem with that. I don't think that's what we should be doing.
Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, may dovetail on that. When I see the staff report of March 10th of 2006, and the language about two-thirds of the way down, "The use of this dock may continue," and then it continues on about the actual use of the dock, there's no way that it states there, "The use of this dock may continue only if you abide by something that we passed six months ago." And that, the fact that this is an official staff report of that day, and it's after the inaction of the non-conforming change, which the last before that was 23 years prior to it, that should be fresh in the memory of staff, especially when they present a document that is going to be read about now 15, or 11 years later. I would be, I'm going to agree in some, in what you just said. One of my many points on why I'm...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Just on that point, if that sentence was about constructing a building instead of placing a dock, I think it would be accurate for staff to say, "You can put a building on the site." But after that building was constructed, if the building owner did not maintain it or occupy it, in fact, if they vacated it, they would become in violation of a number of maintenance policy violations the city may have for upkeep and firelife safety. So just the act of the fact that the dock was permissible at that time, I don't think it had that overreaching effect that you may have inferred that the, that the continued use of that was beyond reproach, that there are duties to, in my metaphor about the building construction, maintain something after it's initially built, just like the dock, to fulfill obligations that are in the future besides just that one day, in my opinion. And if I may go on, Mr. Chairman?
Of course.
I appreciate Commissioner Freiberg's opinion, and I too have showed empathy and sympathy for the appellant and Dr. Salavich and his predicament here. However, I think we're just charged with the simple question as to whether or not staff acted appropriately, period. There's a lot of, I don't want to say noise and clutter, because I don't want to dismiss everybody's comments about this issue, but it's a very simple question, and I think the facts are pretty compelling already. That said, to Commissioner Freiberg's point, I don't know what our role as planning commission can be to foster change to prevent something like this unfortunate circumstance from happening again. And I don't know if this body can be influential in that fact or not, but I'd be willing to participate in that type of discussion at another time on another level. But the only thing the staff has asked us to do right here is to ask us to vote on whether or not staff acted appropriately, given the facts that they had at the time, period.
It is a difficult decision under these circumstances, for sure. Just a question, you know, back after watching the last meeting and Commissioner Freiberg's comments to city staff, maybe. Is there, would it be possible? I'm just trying to think if the city took the onus that this was their administrative burden, I just, how would that even happen if every time a law was passed, to go through every property and every use? And I just, I don't, I just don't see how that could be done, I guess is my struggle. I mean, Julie, is there a database of non-conforming uses out there in the city?
Mr. Chairmembers of the commission, the city does not keep a database of non-conforming uses in the city. At the time that the ordinance was amended in 2005, changing the language from intent to abandon, excuse me, versus discontinuance, you know, at that time, it would have required the city to take a look at every single property and take a look not only at a dock issue, but was it conforming with regard to its lot size, its setback, its building materials, its landscaping materials, its parking count, its parking size? You know, every performance standard that is in the zoning ordinance, staff would have had to do that in order to determine how far the effects would reach of that ordinance. Or, you know, in the alternative, there would, you know, need to be some kind of very massive outreach to all 63,000 residents or property owners within the city.
Yeah, we'll...
That's not at all what we're saying. Not at all. What we're saying is, when Dr. Salavich came in and asked that specific question of the staff, they should answer it correctly and tell them about the ordinance. I would agree with Julie. I'm not suggesting anything else other than there not be, misinformation is a wrong term, but that there be a complete answer when he came in and asked that question when he bought the property, and again, when the property was subdivided. I'm not suggesting that when that ordinance was amended, he should have gotten a notice, not at all. But I am suggesting when he came in and asked specifically about the dock, the answer should have been a complete answer, and it should have said, "Oh, by the way, if you don't put that dock in this year, you'll lose this right," that we just recognized. And it's, with all due respect to Commissioner Farr, it's different than a building permit, or it's the same. I mean, what, to use your analogy, the similar, the same situation would be if he had come in to build a building on a lot that was, that was non-conforming, the prior building had been destroyed or gone, and the staff had said, "Yes, you can rebuild that building" without telling him he had to do it within the year. That's the same situation. That's all we're saying. He was told to come back when he was ready to put the dock in. He wasn't told it had to be within a year. That's what we're saying on the notice. And I, I have no idea who the staff was at the time. I'm not trying to speak poorly or criticize the staff at that time, or certainly not the current staff, who've been very good to work with, but I do believe it was missed. And I do believe that, and not intentionally by any means, I think it was just missed, and Dr. Salavich is the one paying the consequences to an extreme degree in this situation due to these unique circumstances. So I apologize for interrupting, but I just wanted to clarify that we're not proposing any mass changes. We're just suggesting in this instance, there should have been a complete explanation of the ordinance that was just amended.
Thank you for coming. Mr. Kershaw?
Couple of the last several comments brought another couple of questions to mind, and one of them was, or is, how does a person who owns property come to the knowledge that they're now non-conforming legally? It sounds as though if it lapses by a year, there's no notice that is given, or there's no database that's held as to all the non-conforming uses of properties out there. So how does a person realize that they are now non-conforming in general?
I'll answer that. Most of, most all of these issues arise on a complaint basis. No city that I represent, and no city that I know of, has a proactive group of policies that say to employees, "Go out there and find all the non-conformities." All the non-conformities that we typically deal with here are because a neighbor calls in and makes a complaint about a neighbor's property, to say either they're encroaching in park property. Be careful when you make that complaint, you may find that you are too. That's happened. Or that they have a shed within the setback and therefore get it out. Or they put a dock back in after 10 years, and they don't have a right to a dock there. So it's on a complaint-made basis. And then it becomes, it's a very fact-intensive inquiry, because most property owners won't know that their property has a non-conforming use. That's my guess. Most people make the biggest investment of their life without consulting an attorney, and they rely upon a Realtor to guide them through the process. And that isn't the Realtor's area of expertise, and so they often don't get advised about it there. And so when a complaint like a non-conforming use is existing on this property, then we have to go back to records, we have to go back to aerial photos that show the use of the property at the time when the ordinance was changed that made a property become non-conforming. You have to talk to people, you have to hear people's stories about what was being used, what wasn't being used, what were the conditions, and then collaborate that, collaborate that to the best you can with other more objective evidence. So it's a very fact-intensive, it's an investigation to make that determination, and it's one that's not made lightly. It's taken with a great deal of care. In this case, it, I mean, the property owner has told us, "I discontinued the use." And his position is that he relied upon staff, and what he said in his written statement to you was that, "Following my purchase of Lot 10, Block 1, I met with the City of Eden Prairie Housing Staff to talk about the size of the dock allowed." Okay? Talk about the size of the dock allowed. "I was told the legal requirements were the same as for any other lake in Minnesota. I explained my chief concern at the time was to rehabilitate the house, as no one would be using the house, the dock, until the house was rehabilitated." You, if, I think the issue then is staff to anticipate how long a rehabilitation is going to go on. It's going to go on for 10 years. Likely, likely wouldn't have been the expectation.
So for the most part, around the city, non-conforming uses, they're complaint-based, and in this case, the proponent or the petitioner himself inquired as to the dock availability now, and then was told that it became non-conforming, kind of woke the sleeping bear almost.
That's essentially correct, although you'll remember, because you were here at the testimony, the proposed purchaser is the one who asked the question because he was familiar with the lake, having a friend on the other side of the lake, so came here often, and the friend suggested to him, "You ought to inquire about this because these are issues that lake owners know about." So it was then suggested to Dr. Salavich by his proposed purchaser that he inquired about this.
Mr. Chairman?
Sorry?
Yes?
If we were done answering that question?
Oh.
Commissioner Wood, can we, you're done?
Yeah, go ahead.
Didn't mean to interrupt. Does staff currently have the latitude and authority, or did staff back then have the latitude and authority to potentially waive the obligation of, or waive the notice to the homeowner that the discontinuance exceeded one year? If, in other words, if the homeowner came to staff one year and three days after he discontinued use and admitted that to staff and asked the question then, could staff had said, had said at the time, "Oh, don't worry about it, let's just sweep that under the carpet," or whatever the legal process would be? What is staff's latitude to not enforce the one-year discontinuous rule in-house?
I don't think staff has latitude with respect to that. I don't believe that they can take in information that they know requires enforcement under the code and grant ad hoc waiver. So there are lots of situations where you see your city planner in dealing with developments and substitution of one tone of gray for a different tone of gray in a site plan. Those are matters that are handled on that basis, but not of the type that you talk about.
Okay. So are there any legal resources for the appellant? If this body tonight so chooses to sustain your, the staff's opinion, are there legal resources whereby there could be some negotiated settlement outside of this forum?
Well, the next step would be that the city council can choose to review the matter that's called for, that's allowed under the city code. So that's at the discretion of the council.
We don't have that discretion as a commission?
To have the, to tell the city council you should review this?
No, to recommend a negotiated settlement. Is our charge solely to sustain the opinion or to say that the opinion was faulty?
Your statutory and, your statutory and ordinance requirement is to hear appeals challenging the correctness of a staff determination. So you do not have a charge to negotiate a resolution. You're here to make a decision, which is unlike most of what you do in terms of recommendations to the council, that the council usually accepts, sometimes modifies, et cetera. So it's, it's a decision-making role, subject to an appeal, as we're familiar with in other venues, but it's not to mandate a negotiated settlement.
I was just searching for ways in which this could be a win-win situation.
Mr. Rosso, could I ask you a question, please, if I may? Help me out on something. When the homeowner came to staff and discussed their remodeling the home itself, and granted, it's hard to anticipate it was going to take 10 years. That's an awful long time, I get it. But knowing that the situation with the non-conformance of the dock is there, okay. Was that of knowledge to the person that they were talking to in staff, would you think, at that time? Like, right in front of them, says, you know, they know that that dock is non-conforming. My point only being is such, could that have been a time when it could have been discussed that if the remodeling's not done within a year, that that could expire? I just want a clarification, just...
So I think the short answer to your question is, yes. Regina Heron could have said a number of things regarding that, that she wasn't required to say. I've thought an awful lot about that sentence in the staff report.
I'm sure you have, I understand.
And I think you have to, I haven't talked to Ms. Heron, Ms. Rojas, since, well, actually, I saw her at a venue, but haven't talked to her professionally about any of this, certainly. But I think the reason that statement is in there is because, goes back to what I said earlier, this was a replating. I think the statement is in there to say that the dock issue is not at all impacted by the replating, that the dock isn't allowed use, it's a conforming legal, non-conforming use. And in the context of a replating, to give the planning commission, because you might have had questions at the time about... give the planning commission, because you might have had questions at the time about, well, if we're replating the property, what does that do to the rights with respect to the dock? Well, the answer is, the short answer is, it doesn't, replating doesn't affect those rights at all. Now, are there other things that may? Yes. If the ordinance had not been amended, then would we have given notice to the property owner that you can lose your rights if you evidence intent to abandon? And what would that, you know, and then there'd be a discussion about what that would be. But going back, the short answer is, yes, they could have said that, but they didn't.
Well.
No, thank you.
So I guess there were five that were here before and two that were not. I guess I'd just like to understand from everyone that was here prior, if there's anything in here tonight where they feel that would change their stance on this.
Mr. Chairman, you asking if our opinion has changed from?
Yes. No.
No, still have, still have the same opinion. I think the facts are pretty clear that Dr. Salavich did not maintain or use the dock for more than a year, and as a result, lost his right to that legal non-conforming use. I also don't think the city had the burden or the obligation to explain the scenario to Dr. Salavich at the time. The specific question wasn't asked, and I think as Attorney Rosso explained, the discussion was around replating, not specific to the, to the dock, use or non-use. And so I wouldn't have expected them to explain it that way.
Just as a comment, I was on the planning commission and have a vague recollection of the replating. That's an interesting part of the city and nice properties, and I have a vague recollection. That recollection doesn't include anything about the dock. I don't, I just, to me, it was a, you know, didn't stand out at all as an issue that I remember. Now, granted, that was 10 years ago, so my memory may be a little, a little fuzzy, but I do remember the, the actual replating. And since I wasn't here last week, I did get a chance to watch the, the video of the meeting and read the minutes and listen to the discussion here. And, and I think I would agree with Commissioner Poole on, on his position, that I would agree with the finding that the, the staff made, and while, while there could have been circumstances that were, more information could have been communicated. And I think one of the positive outcomes, at least for the city, of this discussion is, I think the planning staff now will maybe be even more sensitized than they have been in the past to, to attempting to give as complete and maybe expand the answers as possible. But I do believe the answer that was given was accurate for the time and for the circumstances. And I do believe the facts are that, you know, the, the dock wasn't used for an extended period of time. And, and the way the law is stated, that, that would say it loses its non-conforming status. So I, I would be on that side of this issue.
Thank you. I share some sentiments as you. I watched the video last time as well. One thing that kind of just sticks out in my mind is that this year timeframe and regarding a dock, and so that's one summer, if you don't put it in, you could lose it after a year. But we're not talking about two summers or three summers, or say there's only three months of a summer, so four years, we're talking about 10 years. So I just, I feel that the, the use was discontinued also, so. And I understand it's a, definitely a sensitive and significant issue we're dealing with here, so. If there's no other comments or questions, we're not in a public hearing, so if there's any other discussion, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Before there is a motion, there are, to your suggestion, council may be able to hear this, and then at that point, they would be able to do a negotiating? Is that what I was kind of understanding?
No.
Oh, okay.
If it goes to council, they have the same decision to make, that, what are the facts, and apply the facts to the, to the law. So could they arrive at a different conclusion? Of course, just as this body before you met could have arrived at a different conclusion. I would say that if a motion is made to approve the, the order with the findings, that it include the amendment to number eight that should be clarified in the findings, that dock located on the shore, really into the lake of Lot 8, so that it's clear what we're talking about there.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the final order 2016-18 to uphold the staff determination with the modification of finding eight to include the terms after on the shore into the lake.
I have a motion with amendment. Do I?
I'd like to second that.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The staff determination is upheld. Commissioner Woodke and Commissioner Freiberg. Thank you for your attendance tonight. Next, moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have public hearings, code amendment, towers and antennas. This is a request to amend the city code, Chapter 11, in sections 11.27, 11.28, 22.29, and 11.36 relating to antennas and towers as a permitted use in the town center, airport, commercial, airport office, and golf course zoning districts. Do you have a report for us?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, the Federal Communication Commission Act of 1996 allowed towers and antennas as permitted uses in any zoning district. Since 1996, the city has created several zoning districts, specifically the town center, the golf course, airport office and airport commercial. And when those zoning districts were created, there was an oversight in adding towers and antennas as a permitted use within that zoning district. Of course, they have been all along because federal law allows them to be. So if staff had received an application, we would have reviewed it accordingly. However, staff is proposing that the language be clarified in our ordinance in order to maintain consistency between federal law and the city zoning ordinance. So it is truly a housekeeping measure to add these permitted uses to these zoning districts.
So just for clarification, the permitted use of towers and antennas is town, well, under the new proposal here is the chart that is crossing over one page into another in our staff report, as well as airport office, airport commercial, and golf courses? Is that correct?
Correct. It's adding towers and antennas as a permitted use within each of those four zoning districts. Towers and antennas are already permitted uses in every other zoning district, all the residential districts, the commercial, the industrial, the office districts. They were just inadvertently omitted from these four districts when these four districts were created. Because these districts were created after 1996.
Okay.
Julie, let me ask kind of a stupid and obvious question, I believe, but an antenna in an airport district, you know, a 100-foot antenna in an airport office district is obviously something that wouldn't be permitted. But the idea of an antenna, if it met all the other requirements of that zoning district, would, would, so say it was a 10-foot antenna, would potentially be allowed, and in a, in some senses, it's academic since the federal law says that it would be, that would overrule our ordinance if we weren't to change it. Is that, I asked two questions there, I guess.
And you were correct on all fronts. So the towers and antennas being listed as a permitted use within these four zoning districts is what is proposed for the change to code this evening. What is not proposed for change is section, I believe it's city code section 1106 entitled antenna and towers. That regulates towers and antennas. So they are per, a permitted use in those zoning districts so long as they comply with section 1106, which then outlines all of the requirements, addressing things like height and distance and all of those specific issues.
Any other comments, questions before we go to?
One clarifying, maybe it was because I was reading while I was listening at the same time, walk and chew gum. I asked the positive, so I'll ask the negative. What areas are not allowed permitted use of towers and antennas in the city?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, towers and antennas by federal law are permitted use in every zoning district in the city.
Okay, we are in a public hearing, so if there's any members of the audience that want to speak, seeing none, any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to move to close the public.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor to close the public hearing, say aye.
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 Opposed? I'll entertain a second motion.
Move to recommend approval to amend city code, Chapter 11, to permit antennas and towers as permitted use in the town center, airport, commercial, airport, office, and golf course zoning districts, and based on the information included in the staff report dated January 4, 2017.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up, any planners report this evening?
No, sir.
Any members' reports? Continuing business, new business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Opposed? All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting's adjourned.
That conforms with the city requirements, and...